I'd like to welcome everybody to East Dundee's regular board meetings dated Monday, April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three, six oh one. Catherine, will you take the role?
Trustee Saviano, here. Trustee Tribber will not be here. Trustee Soder.
Here.
Trustee Mahoney.
Here.
Trustee Kuntzey.
Present.
Trustee Britton.
Here.
And President Lino.
Here. If you all rise, we'll sign the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. That'll take us to public comment. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address the board, either on a, an agenda or non-agenda item? Seeing none, we'll move on. We have a public hearing to open. So, this will be to consider the budget, the proposed budget and appropriations for the village's stub year two thousand and twenty-three for the period May first of two thousand and twenty-three through December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-three. We'll open that meeting. And is there anybody who would like to address the board on the budget? Seeing none. If anybody on the board would like to comment on the stub year budget, we've already had an opportunity to go through it.
No comment.
Erica, do you have any comments at all?
Nothing.
No department heads? Okay. All right, then entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Some of them. Second.
Okay. That'll take us to our consent agenda, if we could have a motion.
I would like to remove item A from the consent agenda separately, so it would be motion, item B, motion to accept the warrants listing the amount of one hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars, forty-six and twenty-four cents, and two hundred and forty thousand dollars, eight hundred and forty-three, and nine cents.
Eight thirty-four.
Eight thirty-four, nine cents. I'm having trouble with my numbers.
Okay, second. Catherine?
Trustee Saviano.
Yes.
Trustee Soder.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Kuntzey.
Yes.
Trustee Britton.
Yes.
Okay, Catherine, Kathleen, what, uh, may you just want to table it, or do you?
No, 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 no. Um, I just want to discuss an correction or completion on, um, let's see. It was in public comment. Susan M. is incorrectly and incompletely identified. The person's name who spoke was Susan Warren. It was clear on the video. And she also commented about her concern policing. So, I'd like her name completed and added to that.
Okay, so it's Warren, you say?
Yes, Susan Warren.
All right, can I make that change?
That's all I have.
Okay. Catherine, could you note that change? You did, great. Is there any other questions on that minute item? No. Catherine? Oh, did you have something? No, oh, no, sorry.
Um, so then, I'd like to make a motion to approve the amended regular village board meeting minutes dated March twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three, with the speaker's name added as previously. Is that what it is?
Wonderful. Catherine?
Trustee Saviano.
Yes.
Trustee Soder.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Kuntzey.
Yes.
And Trustee Britton.
Yes.
Okay, that takes us to our regular agenda items. A, we have a Reefs Across America presentation. Is there, sir, the floor is yours.
Good evening. My name's Jerry Christopherson. I'm president of the True Patriots Care. I was here almost four years ago, I think it was, addressing you when we brought the Walded Heels into our area. And, uh, just so you know, we're gonna be back next year because we're gonna try to get it back for, it'll be five years since we had it the last time, so. But tonight, I'm here to talk about the Wal, or I'm sorry, for Reefs Across America. Have you heard of it before? All right, that's good. Thirty-seven hundred locations nationwide participate in this this year. And it'll be, uh, we've been approved for both East Dundee and West Dundee, both township cemeteries. There's, if you go on, I gave you the calendar and I printed out some stuff for you, but if you get a chance to go online, you can see it's all about remembering our, our veterans that are laid to rest, honoring those that are still serving. And most importantly, I believe, is teaching our children the value of freedom. And, uh, we want to get them involved in this also. So what happens on that day is at exactly eleven o'clock across the nation, there's a cemetery, a service that you program almost, that we do at, uh, at each of the cemeteries exactly the same time. And, uh, we have asked for volunteers. And everybody that I've talked to, all over the country actually, says, don't worry about volunteers. You know, there was good friends of ours that did it last year in South Bend, Indiana. And, uh, they had so many people come to help that day that most people only got to carry three wreaths, you know, so. That's really cool, and I think it'll be really good for our communities that bring, the Walded Heels brought all the communities together for one common goal. I was on the village board of Carpenter'sville for years, and I grew up in this town, and to get three towns degree on anything was pretty impossible. But they all did that, and thanks again for you that were here that helped me with that one. Anyhow, so, uh, in East Dundee, all of the, there's almost twenty-two hundred veterans laid to rest in the East Dundee Cemetery. That has been all plotted and identified, so I know what we know now where each veteran is. And, but the problem we have is in West Dundee, there hasn't been a funeral there, or burial there for almost thirty years. And it dates all the way back to the Civil War. I'm also with the American Legion in Dundee. And, uh, we put flags up every Memorial Day up there. We put about three hundred and seventy that we know of up there. Well, the problem is, we probably won't be able to find relatives and stuff, and we don't want any grave to go without a wreath. So that's why I've, I've asked West Dundee if they could support us with making a donation, and that's what I'm here tonight for also. Uh, I can answer any questions. Uh, like I say, there's so much, and you got a calendar, so you're always, per year, you're gonna remember. But, uh, if you look on what I printed out, this is on the front. On the back, last three pages, it actually talks about the Dundee Township Cemeteries. That was our approval and what happens on that day. So, uh, I can answer any questions you have. The, like I said, the big things, I want to get the, uh, scouts involved. Like, so that they learn that what, what freedom is about, you know. They, it's so easy to take for granted what, what we take for granted a lot. We want to do that too. So anyhow, how it works is we pre-sell the wreaths. They have to be sold and paid for before they ship them. And, uh, that's where I'm gonna need your help, but we can set it up with, like, if the scouts want to help, any fly, or any, any wreath that they sell, they get five dollars back. So it's a pretty decent fundraiser. You know, my, I have a brother and a, and my dad are about buried in East Dundee, and they were both veterans, so that's two wreaths. When I look tonight, and I haven't, it's just been listed as one of the cemeteries, they go, somebody's already bought five. So I don't know how, even who that is yet, because we don't get it very down. So how we do it, we break it down for whatever groups, the True Patriots will be obviously selling them. I think the BFW is gonna sell them. Uh, we'll get the scouts to sell them maybe. You know, whoever, whatever nonprofit groups that want to help us. But like I say, we got almost twenty-two hundred in East Dundee and three hundred over there. Well, you, and each wreath is seventeen dollars, so you can see that comes out to about sixty thousand dollars. But we can do it, and we will do it. And, uh, I like, but the problem is in West Dundee, us finding family and friends that might help us up there. That's, that's where I'm gonna have a problem, I'm afraid. So, East Dundee was good, or West Dundee was good enough to uh, help us by donating fifteen hundred dollars. So if you could also do that, that would be a, a huge help for us. So I can talk all night, but I think you're probably busy.
Have you gone to the township for information on West Dundee's site?
Well, I, I went through the cemeteries, yes.
Wow.
And, uh, but they're, they didn't, yeah, they didn't have, East Dundee was newer, so that's got a breakdown. I mean, he's got the layout and by lot number. So that's, that's not a problem. Over there is a problem. Like I said, that goes all the way back to the Civil War. So.
A bit of a challenge.
Yeah. And, and like I say, it's been a long time, thirty-seven years since they had a burial there. Because it's full, so.
When, when, uh, from a donation standpoint, what, what timelines are you looking for?
Well, if I know it's coming, that's all I need to know. You know what I mean? Uh, we have to have, everything has to be into them. Gosh, I wanna say it was November first or something like that. They come all the way from Maine, and they come by trucks. They come, it's, it's amazing the organization they have, because they go to thirty-seven hundred different locations.
Wow.
And, uh, so we put them out all at the same time, um, November, or December sixteenth this year. And then a month later, we get everybody back to pick them all up, then clean up the cemetery. So, uh, that's our plan, and, uh, I hope you guys can help me a little bit, if you can.
Jerry, right?
I'm Jerry, yes.
Yeah, Tricia. So I, most people know that I'm a president and founder of a nonprofit for veterans also. I participated the past four years in Reefs Across America. And it's awesome to see it potentially come here to East Dundee. It's amazingly, it's laid out wonderfully. It's a well-oiled machine when you get there with the volunteers. They give you a color, they tell you where to go, where the spot in the cemetery is, and then also they make it clear to say their name when you put the wreath down.
Thank you, I forgot that.
That's okay, but it's, it's just so respectful and it's, it's emotional. I cry every time, but like, i- it's amazing. So it's so great to see it come here.
Well, thank you. Saying the name is very important. You know, I, we do the flags when you see them around town and stuff. And, uh, our first event was fourteen years ago now. We welcomed home to Vietnam veterans at Carpenter Park. And at that time, there were seventeen hundred and forty-eight POWs and MIAs that were still missing at that time. Now it's down to fifteen hundred and eighty-one, fifteen hundred and eighty-one, uh, because all the families are given their DNA now, so now when they recover something, they can match it, which is nice. But, uh, at that time, we put, uh, dog tags on each one of the flags, if you guys still remember that then. And, uh, as I did that, I welcomed them home. So, you're absolutely right, that's very important. So thank you.
Of course. Jerry, I think this might be, I think this might be something that we can put on our, you know, weekly email. You know, periodically. Um, and if, also if there's information that we can.
There'll be more and more. I can give you press releases.
Yeah, that'd be great.
You know, they, they have this so perfect, it almost seems like, you know, when you go, and I can get into because we're a an organizer, more than what you guys can see.
Okay.
And it's just amazing what they can do.
Yeah, I mean, and even if there's some way we can post it over at the depot, because we'll be having Saturday markets there and all sorts of things there.
Yeah, we'll have flyers, we'll have all kinds of stuff.
Yeah, anything that you have or need, um, with kind of promoting that kind of stuff, I think.
That would be great.
We can definitely.
You know, we're gonna have, uh, different locations where they can stop in and, and purchase too. I happen to know your least chief, so I kind of twisted his arm and said, hey, you got this, this place right here, maybe, you know, so I, he agreed. I don't know if it was happily, but anyway, uh, we could leave applications there.
That'd be great.
So that would be great. Uh, West Dundee's doing the same thing, so.
So the dates that, then the wreaths are laid are?
December sixteenth.
Sixteenth. And they go through the end of the year, did you say?
It goes through the, I think it's the second weekend in January is when we clean up everything.
So just, can you clarify that number again? It's fifteen hundred?
I'm sorry.
What was the donation request?
Well, I'll take as much as you got.
I'll leave that to my board.
Uh, West Dundee gave fifteen hundred. If you could do that, and Carpenter'sville's going to do it also. So that would be a huge help for us, so.
Seems like there's general consensus to proceed.
Yeah, hundred percent.
We good?
Yep.
Absolutely.
Well, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, that was great. So now, that'll take us to item B, if we could have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance granting a special use permit for tattooing for the property located at three two four North River Street, East Dundee, located in the B one downtown business district.
Second.
So this, uh, went to Planning and Zoning Commission last month, earlier this month, I can't remember. And then was approved, uh, to be recommended for approval by the board and the business owners here this evening, if you have any questions. Um, but otherwise, pretty straightforward, everything in the packet.
Hello, everyone. I'm Murphy Manoso, the owner of Willow and Birch. Um, we are hoping to gain the approval for adding decorative tattooing for our service list. Um, and please let me know if you do have any questions. Um, I'm ready if anyone has anything.
Did you know that there are five tattoo parlors within a half a mile radius from the intersection of thirty-one and Ollie Road?
I did. There's, uh, there's a handful around here, yes.
Well, I personally love to see it there, because I've been wanting to have it approved in this area for probably about the last eight years, so. Um, and I'm, love the way that you've got things set up.
Thank you so much for saying that.
You know, where it's on the second floor and, and that, you know, that, that's not your only, you know, means of what you want to do along with your other really specialized tattooing and work that you do, so.
Correct. It's just, it'd be a wonderful thing to add as an option for clients, especially those looking to camouflage any scarring, any emotional trauma that comes with scars, um, as well as just self-expression.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great.
There are, there are five, uh, ch-ch-ch conditions. That's what I'm looking for, it listed in the packet? Are you aware of those and comfortable with them and?
Yes.
Okay. And I assume that there are window coverings now?
There are, there are. So the, the very permanent ones are en route as we speak. Um, there's temporary ones up right now, but yes.
Awesome.
It'll be fully, fully, um, private from anyone seeing in.
Great.
I'm very aware that people think tattoos equal riffraff, but it can also be very educated individuals that get tattoos as well. And so I'm a huge fan of people lessening the stigma around tattoos, and I appreciate it coming to our progressive village, so thank you.
That's a huge deal. Thank you so much for saying that. It is really important that people recognize the, the opportunities that it can lead to healing for people.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
That's a bit of a stretch for me. It was originally sold to this village as a medically-related procedure for reconstructive purposes and never for this. And so, we at one time had one and put into our ordinances of disallowing, if you will, prohibiting tattoo parlors in the downtown, and I think at that time, it was for good reason.
I can speak to that.
If you'd like.
And I think you're shading it a little bit. I was pers, that is back when, before COVID, and back when the focus was strictly on having all restaurants and making this a culinary district in this area. Which is when, please let me finish, um, which was, which I understood was the agenda, and I was outgoing, and there was also not somebody that was already an established business in the village that is providing other services, both retail and, and, um,
Healing and therapeutic.
And, yes.
Right?
Yeah, exactly. And, and so, me bringing it forward before was all about, you know, opening it up. Now, we find out, thanks unfortunately to COVID, that, you know what, it's not necessarily a smart thing for a village to be putting all of their businesses and all of their storefronts into one business category. Because the, the, the restaurants were, you know, struggled mightily during, during COVID, and I'm not saying something like that's gonna happen again, but it's just common business practice to not put all of your, you know, fish in the one barrel. You never know what's gonna happen. So, um, you can remember it however you want to, Jeff, but I remember it distinctly differently.
I'm not really remembering it in any way. I'm just saying that the board at the time, about twelve years or so ago.
Guess what? You got a new board.
To prohibit it, what?
You got a new board now.
Thankfully, there's a younger board in two thousand and twenty-three that's willing to do cool things that the town needs.
Right.
I will say also, what sets, what sets my establishment apart from the average tattoo shop is the way it's set up. No tattoo shop is usually have, they usually don't have retail. Uh, we have lots of healing items. We're very cancer care-forward. My tattoo, uh, private studio is very serene space, separated from any street view. Um, I only take up, uh, clients by appointment only, so I don't take walk-ins. It's, it's a run, I run it a little bit differently than what you would think your average tattoo shop would be, and I don't even kind of classify it as a tattoo shop. I have a boutique private tattoo studio. There is a difference.
Semantics aside, it adds nothing to the revenue of the village, so we need to keep that in mind.
I just had a client fly in from Florida last week, and as I get busier, I'm hoping to have more people come from all over.
No, but what I'm saying is that, that's, it's a service, so.
It is a service.
Jeff, I'd like to hear from anybody else on the board. You've spoken three times already. If there's any other questions, and if not, from anyone else on the board, I'd like to call the question.
Fine, call it. Catherine?
Trustee Saviano.
Yes.
Trustee Soder.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Kuntzey.
Yes.
And Trustee Britton.
Yes.
Okay, that'll take us to item C, if we could have a motion.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance authorizing execution of a real estate sale agreement and purchase of real property northwest corner of South Van Buren Street and Maiden Lane.
Second.
Oh, that's right, you're right, 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 thanks.
Erica, can you introduce this? Erica, can you introduce this?
So the, this item is a piece of the former Hager factory that was not sold to the current owner, so this was held back by the original Hager pottery industry owners, and it served as an overflow parking lot for the church for a few years, but since then, hasn't been needed and hasn't been used for that purpose, so it's just idle, and the property owners are interested in selling it, and they've agreed to sell it to the village for this, the appraised value, uh, nothing over it, so, we will be able to acquire this property and then combine it with the larger Hager property, so that when the whole property is redeveloped, it can be incorporated into the redevelopment.
So just to be clear, it's no longer being used for the church overflow?
Correct.
It's gotten used at this point? Okay. Thank you.
Hey, anyone else? Catherine?
Trustee Saviano.
Yes.
Trustee Soder.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Kuntzey.
Yes.
Trustee Britton.
Yes.
Yeah, that takes us to item D, if we could have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the village administrator enter into agreement with Azivar Audit Solutions, Inc. to provide comprehensive tax software for the village of East Dundee for three years in the amount of sixty thousand dollars.
Second.
Any discussion? I would just like to go on, the record is saying I not going, I don't approve this expenditure. This, uh, business model that Azivar offers, uh, is one of recovery basis. They use their software to go after monies that are not being collected by the village, and when they uncover those monies that are not being collected, they in turn get a percentage of it. This particular software, I know, Scott, and the floor is mine, please. What I'm saying is that this particular software, while there, an argument could be made for some value coming to it, is what they use to do that. It seems to me like I would be willing to go ahead and first off, we had a problem with them before, so why were we even getting back into bed with them is, is a question mark for me, but if they want to stick to the recovery basis of the service that they provide for East Dundee, I'd be willing to entertain that notion, but to sell, have, to give them sixty thousand dollars, just so on the off chance we may get some value of it, uh, from their software, uh, I, a software that, by the way, we won't own, um, is a bit of a stretch. Actually, it's a sixty thousand dollar stretch. And that's all. Does anybody else have any questions, comments? Catherine?
Trustee Saviano.
Yes.
Trustee Soder.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Kuntzey.
Yes.
And Trustee Britton.
Yes.
Okay, take motion for item E.
I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance adopting the two thousand and twenty-three stub year budget.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. Uh, last year, I think, Erica, we made a very small donation to the Historical Society. Are we including that in this budget draft?
No, we, we did not include that in this year's budget, but if we wanted to continue that donation this year, we could take it out of the contingency.
What was it, we did last year, five hundred? Twenty-five hundred?
I know, it's put it in after the stub year as well. Last year.
It's true. We changed the calendar year.
Goes to the end of the year, so.
Yes, I believe the, the donation was made like last month.
Well, it ended just a couple weeks ago for the season, so if you need to talk to somebody, I do know somebody you can talk to.
We will definitely get them the money.
Yeah, okay. That's, that's cool.
So the upcoming year for calendar year two thousand and twenty-four budget procedure is gonna, what, start November first, or when does?
Probably about October.
Uh, end of October, okay. All righty.
Can you remind me why we're going to the, changing the, um, uh, the date, the, the calendar year?
So there's a couple of different reasons why. The first is, from the perspective of the staff, it's, it's just a lot easier for us to facilitate, because it aligns the, um, the preparation of the budget in the fall, um, and it also allows for better capital planning, because we're able to program the projects that we're gonna do in advance, and then be able to bid them out, um, further in advance, which gives us better pricing. Um, so right now, if, you know, the capital projects that we want to do this summer technically aren't getting approved until tonight, and it's, you know, already, we're already into spring. So any of those projects that we want to bid, we have to wait until after we get budget authorization, and then there's, you know, other people have already bid their projects that are on the calendar year. Um, and then it also aligns the property tax cycle. So any property tax increase has to be done by December thirty-first of every year, so if there was ever a, a property tax increase that was being contemplated, it aligns it with the due date, so that the budget can be approved in tandem with any possible increase. I'm not saying we're gonna do that, I'm saying that that's just, the alignment makes it, uh, for an easier facilitation to implement anything like that.
Thank you. Is there any other comments, questions? No? Catherine?
Trustee Saviano.
Yes.
Trustee Soder.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Kuntzey.
Yes.
And Trustee Britton.
Yes.
Okay, that'll take us to item F, if we could have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance amending chapter fifty of the Code of Ordinances, Garbage, and Refuse.
I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance amending Chapter 50 of the Code of Ordinances, Garbage and Refuse.
Second.
Okay, discussion, questions?
So I see that we're amending this to strike a part of it that's no longer necessary. But we're going to continue to move this onset until next year, which I completely understand because it's a stub year budget and we're trying to keep things tight. But I really do want this to be the last time. So I want this to be for, for the next budget. Can we make a decision on this, not push it again?
Yes, so when we start talking about the calendar 24 budget in October, staff will provide several options for the board to consider if they would like to reduce or eliminate this. But, you know.
Yeah, hard, hard to do in a six-month time period, but yes, appreciate it.
So we will have that conversation thoroughly in the fall.
Thank you.
It's a $370,000 expenditure, somewhere around there. 360.
300? Yeah, so.
Just keep that in mind, I guess. Want to come up with it somewhere else. Any other questions, comments? Catherine?
Trustee Saviano.
Yes.
Trustee Soder.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Kuntzey.
Yes.
And Trustee Britton.
Yes.
Okay, that takes us to reports. Andy?
The Arts Council met first Wednesday of the month. Just an update on what we talked about, the muralists. Maddie will be meeting with me and Deb Chabi this week to go over edits to the draft and then working in appropriate wildlife, Deb is an expert on. So we'll have a more final sketch and a start date pretty soon. There was a survey that went out to the whole village that we had 125 responses, hearing from everyone in the area, our town and the neighboring towns, saying what art experiences they like from other areas, which ones they'd like to see in this area. So if you look at the Arts Council agenda, you can dig through all of those numbers. A few, just brief highlights of things that people generally wanted, just taking like the top three of, they currently attend music events, art fairs, art walks and galleries. They frequently attend, we kind of targeted quarterly, trying to pick things to happen because that's the frequency that people do want to go out and go to these events. The reason that they want to see more art is to beautify the village, inspire creativity, support artists or create neighborhood identity. These are usually out of a list of a dozen or 20 options. The ones that rose to the top, where they'd like to see artwork in our town is the riverfront, the downtown, the depot and along the bike path. We're kind of the top picks. And then what they'd like to see, festivals, more murals, earthwork and environmental art were the top three. So just a quick recap, in case you don't have time to go through all those responses. And then there's the Riverfront Development Survey. Just a shout out to filling that survey out that's currently live to help with planning out the riverfront development. And then I had one question, a resident brought up an issue with water with a spring that was tapped in the past on Van Buren. I think it was Jason Schultz.
Yes.
And Carla Berkey mentioned that they wanted us to bring up that the spring that was tapped right at Van Buren at the entry, like brick pillars as you come into town from Carpentersville. They wondered if there's a regular scheduled maintenance because there's a lot of times roots and things clogging that old spring. And so I think they want to know if it could get on a, a more regular maintenance schedule or just hear what the plan is of. I, I don't have an understanding if that's old material and infrastructure that we don't longer use or if it's something that is being used still. But I was wondering if we could get, I know we're doing a water survey throughout the village, but just want to make sure that's on the list to check out because that was brought up as a concern of something that causes flooding into their homes and the neighboring home downhill from there. And lastly, oh yeah, there's a water testing that Phil, I've been talking with Phil and he's looking into lead service line replacement ideas for the parts of town that have very old lead lines going into their homes. We do have a ortho phosphate coating that keeps the lead from leaching into the water, which is very helpful. But if residents do want to have their water tested, I mentioned that, that I'd like to and maybe some neighbors, it's a $250 minimum to get your water tested. But you could split it with 10 neighbors and make it 25 bucks each instead of $250 for one home. So if anybody's interested, you could kind of group some neighbors together, do a sample and then test, do I have a lead problem out of the tap or out of the filter first thing in the morning and then after you flushed all the water. So there's some options to do some testing in the meantime, while we're still figuring out plans for how we might be able to replace lead throughout the town.
Well, if your house is built before 1955, chances are you've got lead.
And I do have lead.
You do?
Yeah.
So the state of Illinois has made a lot of money available for the replacement of those lines from the city's main to your house. It's just.
Yeah, there were, there were at least five or seven different programs that Phil's looking into. And there's a lot of loans or forgivable loans or grants, like a lot of options that are being looked into. But yeah, that's a concern for, I think, a lot of people in our neighborhood. And, and if you do want to test to see if you have lead, check one of my trustee posts. I kind of took a picture of the one in my house. But if you scratch the pipe and it's metal and it's not magnetic, then it's lead. That's kind of the short answer. That is all.
Do we know offhand, Phil, if anybody's ever used galvanized underneath? Because galvanized won't, is not magnetic either.
We do have, my, there may be some galvanized pipe.
Because I mean, people may confuse it too.
We're going to, we're putting together just a, I can read from my report already.
Yeah, just later, Carpentersville's received a whole bunch of grant money for this purpose. So I don't know if there's any sort of window that's closed on us as far as getting at any of it, but we might.
Currently collecting information, we'll present, have a conversation with the staff to kind of put together some talking points and have a conversation with you as elected by here very soon. A comprehensive conversation.
I talked to the mayor of Elgin too, and they got a little bit attached. Okay, Trish? Oh, is that it?
Yes, thank you.
Trish?
He said enough.
Scott?
Erica, I wanted to ask about our village's comprehensive plan and what we think, when we think we should revisit that.
It's a timely subject. We had a conversation with staff about it this morning. So our plan is to budget for the process for calendar 24. So it's, it's about an 18-month, 18 to 24-month process to update or revamp the comprehensive plan. Ours was originally done, I think, in '02 and then updated in '12. So it's, it's over 10 years since our last touch point on it. And of course, a lot's changed since then, so it's worth looking at. So Frank was taking the lead on having a discussion with P and Z about it. And then subsequently, we'll have the same conversation with the village board. So we're tentative really looking at like either June or, or June or July to have that conversation both at P and Z and at the village board. Then we'll budget for it in October, November. And then we'll kick the process off probably in January or February of next year.
Okay, and we would be outsourcing the construction of that document? Or would it be something we do in-house?
Yeah, we would have to contract for that service.
All right, how much do we estimate that would cost?
I couldn't give an accurate figure.
That's fair. All right, thank you, that's all.
That's it? Kathleen?
To that, and we also have our strategic plan. That kind of ties in to that, that's up in 2005 as well. Last I checked, we.
In '25?
Uh, 2025, excuse me. And so last I checked, there was quite a, quite a bit of it that's been accomplished. And so being able to set that up to a certain degree, that would then tie into where we're, what we're heading for in the comprehensive plan would be kind of a nice way to tie that all in together. And then reset any plans or expectations or discover new things. But that was, and then the other thing, Phil, I had the same thing about Jason Schultz and that's, that, that stream. I think if there is some way that we can put together a calendar so that, you know, every two months, three months, whatever, it's, it's comprehensively checked. So that there isn't this slow backup that, that ends up then filling in when, when there's big rains and then, and just keeping, keeping it on a regular maintenance program. It is very old infrastructure.
We have added on, we've done probably four, five times in the last year or two, putting out roots and whatnot. So it's, it has been maintained. So I, to maintain with both residents, they've been out in most cases while we've been there with in-house maintenance and we've outsourced.
Okay, does it need more than maintenance? Is that, do you see that?
Right now, it's just keeping the roots out. We do have, because of the slope, we may have to look at some comprehensive repairs to keep the root, root systems out, pure root systems. So that's something we'll look at, televise and then we can have options for, for some point repairs.
Yeah, it just reminds me of this, this, you know, story that keeps coming up, similar to the situation on Lent and wherever that was just fixed.
Oh, that, yeah, that's stormwater. This is natural, this is natural ground.
This is spring.
And it's an offshoot of actual Macintosh, correct? I mean, it's not Macintosh Creek that's going through behind Carla's and.
Correct, the source of the spring water is uphill from, directly from there.
So it's not, yeah, it's.
Okay, thanks, that's all I had. Um, my only thing is we're having some meeting issues with planning and zoning. And I just want to raise that and see if we can take a look at where we're at with it and get that trued up. The other thing is I want to make sure our, our attorneys have been nice enough in the past to offer training to everybody on the commission. And since it's, they're the first face of our businesses, I want to make sure that maybe we can go through that again with them and ask all of the commissioners to attend because our businesses, you know, new businesses, local businesses that are already here, our residents are going in front of this commission. And it's, I just want to make sure it's tight. So it's just, I'd like to take a look at some of the attendance records. I don't want to have quorum meeting issues. I don't want to have people who aren't confident in, in helping with the meeting and helping progress the meeting. I want to, you know, reading the agenda is important and all that good stuff, so.
Yeah, 120% of the meetings have to get canceled because there's no form of them, any of our members.
Yep, so, thank you. That's it.
Okay, Kate? Anything?
No report. Other than we're happy to provide any trainings that the village would like us to.
Thank you.
Great, great. Chris?
No report.
What's with village music? Can you comment on it?
Uh, there, there's discussions on it right now on how to, you're going to define it and that sort of thing. And then move forward in one direction or another, whether it be regulated by the noise ordinance. They're talking outside music could be different than music coming from inside a building and causing a disturbance. So they're, they're.
No, the village music store.
Dundee, Dundee Music. As opposed to music in the village, which was just on the agenda for the last month.
The music store, foundation is in, in really poor shape. They have a structural engineer out there on Friday. They drafted some drawings. I'm supposed to get stamp drawings sometime this evening. And they will be out there this week. They shored it up on Friday.
I spoke to him and.
Yeah, and there, it's, it's a major undertaking.
Prognosis was not positive.
He's going to go forward with it. It's a $96,000 improvement.
Yeah, at least. And, yeah, that was.
Yeah, the pictures didn't look good.
Almost got to wonder, or the value of the building, is it worth it? I mean, the thing is out of plum before it collapsed, you know, you could see it just looking at it, you know, so. As long as nobody got hurt, I guess that's the, the takeaway, so. Okay, great, thanks. Joe?
No report.
Chief?
Nothing to see.
Great. Phil? Brandis? All right, Erica?
Uh, the middle school band is going to do their concert at the Depot Park on my computer dive. I believe the date is May 17.
All right, that's it?
That is it.
Okay, then I have just to announce a proclamation for Arbor Day, being April 28th, 2023, that I'd like to, I won't read it into the, into the, the meeting, but it does talk a little bit about the history of it and that we are urging all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day by planting a tree and celebrate the efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, which actually we have done.
Thanks to everyone.
For those moths, so that's a real good step in this direction. So East Dundee is doing its part, so thank you all. I also have just one other thing I'd like to, to share, you know. I'd like to just mention a few things about the, the recent election that we had. You know, it's over, the election season and probably to the, a welcome note to, to us all. But there were a few issues that I wanted to clarify that were brought up. Some of the candidates took to social media and even went door to door speaking about basically demonizing and vilifying our area developers. And I would just like to let everybody know that the message that, of course, was being portrayed was that somehow these developers were going to try and gain control of our village or our board, which is just a silly notion. But I would also like to remind everybody that it's these developers who risk their money by making their investments in our community. And those investments then generate businesses which create the sales taxes that we use to live on. And if we didn't have those investments, we have to rely on property taxes. That's it. We'd be a bedroom community just like Sleepy Hollow. Believe me, we don't want that. Which then brings me to my other point. The same candidates took to the advance a notion that I was going to somehow raise taxes. Now, what tax I have the power to raise is unknown to me. I can't raise your taxes, people, you know, I mean, and I know it, they know it, you know it. So to suggest otherwise is, is really just, again, kind of ridiculous. Was it effective sounding that alarm? Yeah, it really was because they got reelected for it, which is okay. But I, what I guess what I would like to say is that, you know, if anybody's willing to, to knock on your door and suggest something as outlandish as your village president is going to raise your taxes, I would hope that you're going to take the time to get some more information. Because if someone's going to lie to you about that, they're going to lie to you about just about anything. So just take that into consideration. So you get the government, you deserve, that's the takeaway, so thank you. So I guess we're going to be going into executive session, so I'll take a motion or entertain a motion to adjourn.
C5.
What's that?
C5 is what we need for executive session.
Oh, C5, okay. Anybody would like to read it?
I will make a motion to adjourn to executive session close to the public and media under the provisions of the Illinois Open Meetings Act, 5ILCS, 120 slash C5, acquisition of property. We will not be coming back to public session. We will adjourn from executive session.
Second.
Catherine?
Trustee Saviano.
Yes.
Trustee Soder.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Kuntzey.
Yes.
Trustee Britton.
Yep.
And President Lino.
Yes. Okay, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out and.
Erica, are we taking 5?
If we take 5.
Take 5.
Yep, uh, 5-7.
5-7, I like that better.